Of the, like I said, collective social responsibility which for most companies will come as corporate social responsibility. So many of the companies today are doing different kinds of socially responsible projects. We are going to be asking as many companies as possible to invest in social housing. And we will provide matching funds from our National Emergency Housing Fund. That also will then work with what I call diaspora funding. We need to get the diasporans who are currently earning enough. And most of them looking for ways to save their money and also have a sense of belonging in Nigeria to have protected housing in estates that we would provide infrastructure. We will provide power, we would provide roads, water and all of those things. And ask them to invest in those protected housing so that they are able to do so with little or no stress about having to build themselves. So the two things, the last one very quickly is that we have a stock of empty and abandoned buildings all across Nigeria. And we have some people estimate in the region of 100,000 empty buildings. We need to create a policy that says if nobody claims those buildings and can say you will have a finishing point, Nigeria will take those empty houses and we will make them available to the people who cannot afford them so that they can use it.
Thank you very much.
I have a different approach to the mortgage system. The mortgage system is very foreign to Nigeria, even to those who have access to it. So even for university graduates that are just coming out of school, the mortgage system is still foreign to them. So what we are going to do, I'm not of the, I'm a builder. I know how to build and we are going to do this mission. But the present approach is not working. This system whereby you are using Wall Street economy doesn't work. We have to use the corner street economy. Our banks are failed this country woefully, including the central bank. And that's why you still have in all the markets, people doing contributions and you have corporatives. What we will do, we will incorporate it into a mortgage system where the professionals in the building industries, especially the quantities of years. Because the pride of a Nigerian is to own his own home. And it does mean it takes pride in building it systematically. We need to work with the people. The system that we are trying to bring is so foreign and people have resisted. And government is not listening. We are going to listen. We will make sure that the system where the people wanted is what we are going to do so that everybody can take pride in owning a home and building it in a way that they will have the pride and it will still be built within maybe six months or 10 months or 12 months. Where the banks will be the custodian of-
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next question we have for the candidate is more practicalities. A lot of research and lived experiences shows that the bureaucracy in government tends to be problematic. And so people don't take approvals because the process is chaotic, it's stressful. And then there are so many agencies doing the same thing that one tends to get confused as to what to do. How will you go about streamlining the process, that's one. And the second one is how will you synergize the activities of the various ministries and agencies of government that are invested in various stages of the housing value chain? So I start from, would you like to start?
Yes.
At the core of every development activity must be a compelling vision. When people see the benefits of that vision, it's easy for them to connect with it. The A and the B for me Nigerian-led government will share the vision of doubling our building capacity in every year. Starting year one with 250,000 houses, year two with 500,000, year three with 1 million and year four with 2 million houses. Meaning that in the first four years of our administration, we're committing to seeing construction of 3.75 million houses. Now, the thing is bringing everybody to the table. States, local government and the private sector, especially even with the development agencies, to come and say how we each and everyone has a path to play in actualizing that goal. Especially when you sell what you would call the ripple effect on the economy. When you talk about everything that will happen when the private sector is in, factories and all of those kind of things that means. The first most important thing in streamlining and getting all the agencies involved. The second thing is we must set a processing goal that says whatever application we set through within 30 days, it must be resolved. And that must be done within our first year. Every application must be resolved within 30 days. And then everybody must find out what do we cut off, how do we cut it off? And that's basically what is going to happen.
I think Mr. Oshuteli wants to go next?
Yes. Correct question as you have asked. Being a civil servant was in the Ministry of Housing before myself. So I know exactly what you are talking about. The problem is not, maybe 50% is in the approval process. But the biggest problem is, as I said before, Nigeria is not accessible. Because not every land in this country has been surveyed. Not, so therefore for somebody that wants to buy a piece of land, he's not even sure what he's buying. That's why you see one of Monila is selling a piece of land to 10 people. So what do the ordinary man do to avoid is he start building. And the one thing that government can do is is always here. Even if it sits everywhere, the government is always catching up. Instead of governments to encourage the stakeholders to have those infrastructures ahead of business. So whenever you are building a new Victoria Island or a new aqua site anywhere, you will discover that it is going to become a slump at the end of the day. Because the necessary infrastructures are not done first. And this is what I call taking share of the small things so that those small things can take us to business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who wants to go next? Okay.
In 25 years, the National Housing Fund, which is part of the national, the mortgage, the federal government's mortgage bank, has only been able to create about 17,000 housing units in 25 years. Now, this is a fact, you can check this out. It is a spectacular failure of political will. Let me give you an example. When Jackunde was the governor of Lagos State, we saw what he was able to do with housing in this state. When Fashallah was the governor, there was progress in some other areas, but it didn't look as if there was so much progress in housing. Today, housing is one of a super ministry of about three or four impossible mandates. The first thing as president of Nigeria is that I will separate housing from those three other mandates and make it housing and open development. Number two, all the institutions in the value chain, I don't see in the current housing, you know, policy architecture, which one has a strong regulatory role over building standards in this country and just making sure that housing policy is executed. The problem in this country is that there is no regulation of anything. There's no regulation of hospitals, there's no regulation of schools in terms of standards, there's no regulation of housing in terms of standards or if there is nobody respected and there is no consequence. Regulatory policy is important. Making sure that whichever institution is in charge of anything delivered on its mandate is important. That is a performance management issue. Performance management will be one of the prime issues, one of the major offices of my presidency.
Thank you. So, Dr. Obi.
So the problem of excessive bureaucracy and regulation is what the housing sector is going through. And so the most important thing is, the most important thing is going to be to get the data that tells us where we are in terms of this overregulation and- Agar, don't clap too much, you will eat into my time. So we know that it takes right now 21 days for the processes of registration to happen. We know that it takes about 274 days for the entire gamut of what you need to do in transfer of titles and things like that to happen. We have to set process targets, one. Number two is that there is something called blockchain technologies. What blockchain technology is doing in terms of digitization process is unbelievable. It removes too much human interaction and therefore saves the housing sector from the major harm that we see in the bureaucratic process that is in the value chain. And then number four is that the connectivity between all that we do with housing to the wider economy will also help us reduce the duplication that happens in the value chain. So we don't look at housing as an insular sector, we look at it as a connector sector. Thank you very much.
Mr. Oshuteli.
Thank you. I will be running a government that's allergic to bureaucracy. And I mean that part of the problem that our housing sector has is that we also do not have documentation. Proper documentation, the processing of this documentation, you can almost go around Lagos and not know except you are lucky, the documentation of any particular house. And I said this as a journalist, there was a time a pastor bought a house for a prostitute. I mean, and I was trying to find the documentation. And I couldn't find it in Lagos. I used everything I can. They said you have to see somebody, somewhere before you can get the documentation. The reason is that nobody wants you to know what is going on in this country with regards to how houses are built, who owns houses. Because most of the houses you have in Nigeria are owned by just a few people. And we also have to have a transparent land registry system in Nigeria. In the UK, that was how a Star Harry reporter that was able to catch a lot of tips because they have a central land registry. If you know their address, you will know the owner of the house and how much they pay for the house and how much it is worth. You have to be able to do that in Nigeria. Without this, we can't even start to plan. And don't forget, with your respect, I studied geography and planning at the University of Lagos. And never I stand up to be a journalist. And my hope is that as president, we will replan this country completely from the bottom. And have a future that of course is digitalized.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Digitized, sorry.
Digitized, thank you.
Digitized.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Shorari. Still on governance issues. Now Lagos State is the economic hub for Nigeria, as we all know. And it was the federal capital territory until 1991. So there were a lot of significant federal governments, lands and administrative properties in the state. Today, these properties are abandoned. And they are total value runs in billions of naira. If elected president, how would your office facilitate the release, reuse, remodeling and redevelopment of these properties in such a way that it will increase the national housing stock? So I'll start from, okay, you can start.
The reason I wanted, I wanted to go first on this is that this was an issue that a policy of announcement and design was already done sometime in the administration that I was sat of. What is it that creates an incentive for the next administration to abandon a policy progress? Because that has become a problem, what I would do is to not even waste time. So the first thing that we must acknowledge is that our total budget now, 2019, is just 30 billion dollars. It is not even equivalent to the budget of the New York Fire Service. So we need all the resources we can find. Therefore, there won't be any kind of timeline in getting the diagnostic on the existing houses of the federal government in Lagos State and immediately doing a conversion program for the private sector and public use of the kind that ensures higher productivity of energy for our country.
Thank you very much. I will not give any more of our public institutions to the private sector. They've had enough. And what I'm going to do is to do an inventory of what is left of federally owned properties in Lagos. And the ones that we can convert to schools, we converted to schools. The ones that we can convert to houses, we converted to houses and given back to workers. I would love to convert the federal secretary to a hospital in Lagos, yes. Instead of dashing into cockroaches and lizards. The federal government of Nigeria is a wasteful government. If we convert this to private use, you are going, it's going to end up in the hands of our ministers, governors, party leaders, national leaders of some of these political parties who are based in Lagos, like the Jagavan in Lagos here. We don't want to give any more of our properties. Nigerian properties should be used by the Nigerian people, period. And we don't even have enough space to take care of our social needs. We can't give any more of our properties to the private sector. In fact, I will be looking at how we can get some of the things that we sold to them at below market price back to the Nigerian people.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Who's going next?
Like I said a little earlier before, there is a stock of an abandoned housing in Nigeria that has to be put up. And so we're going to set up a board specifically to look, and this will be set up with some of the most reputable people. Like it would be like something like your shopping, but it's exactly what do we have on ground and what is the best use that we can put it through. Some of that use, like has been said, would be hospitals, some of it will be offices. But another interesting thing that we can do is we can actually give these buildings to developers who will be able to let and rent them out so that we can have returns on the investment that the government has already made into it. So those places, there's so many people today that want offices. Young people that are looking for offices that are cheap and affordable. And then you have the federal secretary there in Icoye and it's empty. Like, like my brother said, it's filled with cockroaches and lizards. Yet there are people that are looking for offices, they are willing to pay rent on them. We will make sure that we find a way to commercialize every building either by renting them out or leasing them out on long-term lease. This is what it is, so that we can earn money on the return on all the investments that is in the past.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oshuteli. Good luck to you.
My approach is going to be very different, but it's close to what you have said. I would prefer to use all those buildings, take the stock and use them as upgrade student accommodation.
Thank you, thank you.
Pro- Thank you. Thank you. Hello, is it working? Hello, is it working? Hello, yeah, okay, good. My approach would be very simple. Depending on where the abandoned federal property is in Lagos, that is what should influence what you want to use that property for. You bring in the experts, some of it should be used for social housing. Some of this can be used for private sector development for offices. It's a combination, but it depends on and what grounds. Because that type of, you don't go and build a housing estate in the middle of a commercial office development area. So I think the location is what will determine the use. It's a mix of social housing, public use and private sector development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We had had an interesting evening and please give a round of applause to all the candidates. We have also had quite some engagement from social media. And the guys on Twitter have been sending in questions and comments. So you can always check the hashtag. And so now we are rounding up and we just want to give an opportunity to one of the governorship candidates who is in the house, Baba Sundey Olaleke Badamotse of the ABB, to say one word, one minute. Yes, one minute. One minute concerning housing in Lagos.
35 years ago, Alagilati just when they built 20,000 affordable housing units in four years and three months in this same Lagos state. Since then, construction technology has moved on in leaps and bounds. And in the next four years, we will be delivering a minimum. And this is all about managing expectations. A minimum of 40,000 affordable housing units, 10,000 affordable housing units, year on year. It is clear that we have land limitations in Lagos state. So we're not going to be doing 10 floors, 15 floors, minimum 20 floors. Minimum one-bedroom flats, two-bedroom flats. Because of our demographics, 70% of our population are people between the ages of 35 and 18.
Thank you, Mr. Badamotse, in the honour he gives up.
Okay, so thank you very much, sir. At a final word, as a final word, we are just going to ask each of our presidential candidates to give us their final word. Please, one minute, 30 seconds to one minute, please. We'll start from you, Professor Morali.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think, thank you for this discussion, I think it's been wonderful. I think the question of housing is important for Nigeria for three reasons. One, developing the housing sector is important for inclusive growth. All the spinoffs of housing construction, masons, laborers, electricians, they all get more work and they all earn income if we develop our housing sector. That's number one. Developing the housing sector is very important as a way to diversify Nigeria's economy. That's also very, very important. So I think that housing is certainly something that should become a priority. It is also a priority because developing our housing sector will be one of the ways to fight corruption in this country. One of the things that gives rise to corruption in the public service is the fear of growing old and not having a roof over your head. So developing housing is part of fighting corruption. So I'd like to say that housing is a very important priority for this country and certainly will be in my presidency.
Thank you very much, Professor Morali. Dr. Obi.
The startup program, which looks at what a standard housing opportunity should be for the poorer segment of our society, is one of the flagship initiatives in our manifesto. We will completely accelerate its design and execution. Number two is that we will connect everything that has to do with expanding access to housing to the get a skill, which is what focuses on producing 900,000 diverse skills in our economy. The housing sector holds the promise for mental skills building. Number three is that the economy has to grow. And everyone needs to be able to be productive and competitive in the economy. So macroeconomic stability that would enable the poor to not have-
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Housing under a Shorari administration starting from June 4, 2019 would be a fundamental human rights. And my promise to the people of Nigeria is that you cannot continue to vote for people who took up your roof and expect to have shelter. You cannot expect this present crop of failed political leaders to provide you housing when they have no plan for your future. They destroy your opportunity to have a house in the past and they have no plan to build your homes for the future. But it's very important to tell Nigerians that we can build Nigeria out of poverty. That's what they did in China and that's why they have what they call ghost apartments. They did it in Singapore, they did it in South Korea. It is time for Nigeria to have its own housing revolution and a general revolution that will put an end to the old patriarchy. Thank you very much, Mr. Oshuteli.
Thank you very much.
2019 is not just any ordinary year. 2019 is a year to decide whether we want the old Nigeria that now has 108 million homeless people. that now has 108 million homeless people in the most less country on earth, simply because it's poorly managed. Or you want a new Nigeria where has access to a safe, an affordable house and shelter. In the new Nigeria, every child above the age of six not only has a roof over their head, but also a bed that is their own. All of this works, we've got to take housing as the center of our social development and our economic development, like it's being done in the UK, in the US. Eighty, ninety percent homeownership in Singapore, seventy percent homeownership in the US. We can also have a homeownership in Nigeria, but that is in the new Nigeria. So vote for a new Nigeria where you will have access to cheap funding, to be able to get nothing and all that you need.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mbuya. Thank you.
In a court party, we have a shortage of approximately 700,000 homes to be built per year. Simple math, we had 50 homes or apartments in every walk. This is achievable. Not only that, to build a single family dwelling home would take six individuals to work for six months. So if we embark on seriously building Nigeria, now we are going to have a robust economy. We have people employed and it will increase our GDP. Therefore, I'm employing everyone of you to please take your time to vote a court party in Lagos.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're committed to leaving here in the next 10 minutes, and so we apologize that we will not be able to take questions. However, the conversation continues on social media. All the candidates are active on Twitter at least, and on Instagram and Facebook. But you can follow the conversation on hashtag Housing Market, hashtag Town Hall Meeting, hashtag Town Hall, and please follow us at chlcy underscore unilite. That is the Twitter handle for the Center for Housing and Sustainable Development. May I now invite Professor Nubie to close the meeting?
Oh, my God. It's a very thankful affair, every respected by the DDC here now. We want to appreciate our special guests for tonight. We are praying the aspirants for the people that are the candidates, or the candidates for the next election. We, we, we appreciate you. We appreciate your time and we appreciate your sacrifice. We appreciate the fact that you were, you were able to see what this sector and the vast majority of C. From what we have heard from you, we've discovered that all of you have passion for house and you understand that if you want to change the dynamics of this nation, we have to pay a particular attention to house. I want to say that for wherever we live this nation, understanding the mystery behind housing is key. And like we have been told, that it's the beginning of a discussion. And even after the election, whoever from the government, the sector, the university is willing to work with the government to make sure that all Nigerians have access to affordable housing. We want to appreciate as many that have been around. There are many personalities among us that carry faith also in the good night. We have entities of organizations among us. We want to appreciate your time. We believe that there is a passion for a better Nigeria, and that is why we are here. And I believe in God that that better Nigeria will soon see in the near future. I want to appreciate your coming. Thank you so much and God bless you. So we just have photographs with the candidate. And then we will close the ceremony. Let's just have a couple of moments. We can applaud ourselves for being a very wonderful audience. Thanks. Ask Rachel, but please keep on asking your question.
Thank you very much and good night. The town hall meeting is over.
Action! Action! No go away! No go away! Action! No go away! Take it back! Action! No go away! Take it back! Take it back! Take it back! Action! Action! No go away! Take it back! Take it back! Action! Action! Take it back! Take it back! Action! Action! Adama DiBoe! Adama! Adama DiBoe! Take it back! Adama DiBoe! Take it back! Adama DiBoe! Adama DiBoe! Adama DiBoe! Adama DiBoe! Take it back! Take it back! Action! 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 No go away! Take it back! Action! No go away! No go away! Take it back! Take it back! Take it back! Action! 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 Take it back! Action! Action! Take it back! 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 Action! Action! Take it back! Take it back! Action! 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 Take it back! Take it back! I don't know why you should do that. Baba me do what me do. Oya, oya, take it back, not take your back.
Sorry, sorry, you have to walk faster.
Nigeria's new president is called. Oya, oya, oya.
You can't move on.
You should be a no protesto. I love you. Take it back! Take it back! Action! Action! No go away!
Yes. Greatest Nigerian people. Greatest Nigerian people. I want to thank you. As you can see on the inside, this is what they are afraid of. That's why they don't want us to participate.
Yes. We can see so clearly.
Because we know that we are knowledgeable about governance. We know all the lies they have told the Nigerian people over these years as to why there is no functioning housing policy. This is just a debate about housing. And you can see that we are very clear about how we want to build this country out of poverty and build houses for Nigerians. It's not difficult. And I'm sure everybody learned something, including other candidates here tonight. The people who actually came to wait for are the Alages, the two Alages, Alaji Buhari and Alaji Atipu. But you know they will never come to an intellectual environment to have a debate. But this is the reason why a national debate is important, so that everybody can learn something about what is upstairs here. And the issue of experience will be settled, the issue of integrity will be settled once and for all, and Nigerians can pick their real leaders. And that is what you saw here today. I don't know how you guys felt about the conversation here today.
Fantastic, fantastic.
As a matter of fact, to be honest with you, I had to downgrade my participation because the people I was expecting did not show up. But I also have to thank our colleagues who came and shared the platform with us. And this is the future of Nigeria that you are all looking forward to. A vibrant Nigeria, a vibrant leadership in this country that can argue for every Nigerian, that can fight for every Nigerian, and can stand up for every Nigerian.
We believe in you.
And we hope this message will also be transmitted all over the world and everywhere across any of this country. Thank you guys so much for coming.